Get where you can't hear, Mr. Banks, let us know.
Okay.
All right. Well, our lawyer ain't here. Have you heard from him, uh?
He's here, he's here, he'll be in once we get started, I think.
All right. All right. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
We gonna now call our first meeting of August 12th. We're gonna ask Gerald Lees in to pray if you will, and will if you leave us in the pledge.
Yes.
And we got Supervisor District Four here on the phone. Gerald, if you will.
Thank you, let us pray. Father, Lord, again, we come to you, Father, asking you for your blessings, Lord, upon us as we make decisions for Madison County. Father, we pray for the people in Kentucky, Lord, as the flooding hit them all of a sudden, Lord, and several have, uh, are missing and, and several have found, been found, uh, dead, Lord. We just pray for their families, Lord, and ask you, your hand would be upon them, Lord, as they go through this trying times. But, Father, we just pray for our country and overall, Lord, and our world, as our leaders make decisions, Lord, and hopefully they can come together as one and do what's pleasing to you and what's pleasing in your, in your side, Lord. But most of all, Father, we just thank you for who you are in our lives, in your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Tentative salute pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Ronnie, you up?
Yes, Mr. President, you should have before you the July the 18th and the July the 28th board minutes. I would ask that there are no changes, the board please approve said minutes.
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
Got a motion by Gerald, second by Sheila. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Next is concerned citizen. Uh... All right, we can have, uh, Mr. Bob. Aye?
Mr. Bobby Dye.
Bobby Dye. All right, come right up and tell us.
Bobby, while you were making your way up, I would ask Tim to come up as well, and Mr. Dye is the gentleman that had the tree removed. Uh, I think it was in Lake, Lake Cavalier area, on Lake Cavalier Road that we discussed at the last board meeting as far as reimbursement. And he's here to talk a little bit more in details about it, so, Mr. President.
All right.
We'll just turn it over to Mr. Dye.
Well, my...
Yeah, I was just asking for an appeal on the, on the decision on the tree, based on some information. Can I give you a brief background? Uh, we had a lightning strike on two trees in our backyard and decided that while that was being done, we'd have that, the front tree that was not struck, that had been dead for a while, outside our gate checked, uh, to see if we could have it removed at the same time. Uh, when I contacted my homeowner's insurance agent, he had mentioned that, you know, a tr- a dead tree that's been dead, that you've acknowledged has been dead, if it falls, homeowner's insurance doesn't cover it. So if it falls on your homeowner's, uh, on your fence or gate or neighbor or anything else, you're personally liable. So there, suddenly there's a little bit more urgency in getting that thing removed because it was a large tree and it'd been dead for a while, so I contacted Gerald Steen and said, now, can we get it looked at to make sure that that's on our property or off our property? And for about a week or so, we're trying to get a determination on that. It was finally brought back that it was apparently determined that it wasn't our property, and, uh, when I contacted, I was contacted by email by Mr. Brian that said, it's fine for you guys to remove, even if on us, we ask that you be licensed and bonded as, as I'm sure you do as well. And I've responded, that's good, we'll go ahead and have it removed right away and then have that taken care of so there's no liability at stake. Uh, so we did respond in that, in that regard, thinking the tree was covered. Uh, Joe Morgan, Morgan and Morgan Tree Service, a very reputable company, uh, removed the tree, and I asked him, would you itemize out the cost of that large tree that was under the power lines having that removed? So he did, and I presented, I presented that to the board, and, uh, then, but I wanted to make sure that all the information, the background information was disclosed, and I didn't just willy-nilly go have it removed. It was my understanding that it was from Mr. Brian that it was covered, so we had it removed in that regard. But I understand also from Mr. Espy, there's a protocol to be done that, uh, that I wasn't aware of, but it, uh, it was, but since it says it was never approved, it actually was, so, um, I just want to make sure that was, that information was acknowledged in order for me to the decision to be, go back under re-appeal, so reconsideration for appeal. That's basically it.
Mr. President, I would, I would ask, uh, Tim or Mike, either one to pitch in at this time, because I know we all three were emailing back and forth at the time.
After the, uh, the email, which was during the week of, uh, MAS, which is Supervisory Convention, um, I had a conversation with Mr. Dye on the phone that Friday morning, and at that time, you asked me if it was going to be covered.
Right.
Okay, if I had told you that it was going to be covered earlier, why did you ask me if it was going to be covered at that point? And my response to you at that point was, I don't have the authority to do that, you're gonna have to get with Supervisor Steen.
I, I don't remember or recall you saying it would be covered until I got that in actual writing from you, and I was assuming since you represent the county, uh, that, that was an authorization, say, you can't have it removed even if on us, that's all you can go by, so I didn't...
Well, that was done before the conversation that we had, that, this is dated before the conversation.
Okay, either way, I'm just gonna buy, based on what you stated in your email.
Tim, Tim, on yours, let me just ask Tim, and, and you said this at the last board meeting as well, uh, that y'all did go out and look, when it's like y'all, there's a couple of, from the county employees went out and looked.
Yes, sir.
And, um, one determined that it was on right of way, the other determined that it wasn't?
I think the other one that determined it wasn't, wasn't in the right location, they weren't looking at the right tree, they went back out later and both of them agreed that it was in the location that it's actually in.
And then you went out on the Friday after we got back from the Supervisor Association?
Correct.
Or was it Friday or at that morning?
It was Friday morning, yes, sir.
Friday morning, and what did you see?
I saw a location where a tree was that appeared to be on our right of way, based on the right of way maps that I have from, you know, Lake Cavalier's subdivision plot.
Could you tell whether the tree was dead, dying, alive, from the, from the stump?
I couldn't tell if it, I mean, the tree wasn't there, so it was just a stump, but my folks that went out previously did say that the tree was dead.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Uh, good morning.
Morning.
My only contribution is, uh, number one, thank you, Mr. Dye, for coming. But there was, you ought to make sure that everything was fully disclosed. Uh, nothing you said in your statement is new to the board, so everything was fully disclosed. I think, though, the misunderstanding that you may have that I had, when I first read, uh, the engineer's email, he said, it's okay to go forward even if on us. Now, when I read that, I took it to mean, even if on us means out of our pocket, means go ahead and cut it, we will pay. That's not what he meant. Even if on us meant even if on our right of way. So he couldn't give you the authority to cut it, because the board would have to approve that before we, you would cut it, we reimburse you. So what he meant, I went back and reread it, reread it, reread it, so there's a miscommunication. He, he, you could have said even if on our right of way, but you said even if on us. That's the difference, that's, that, that's the difference here. But, uh, he couldn't have given you authority to cut something where we would pay without this board agreeing to it. And then in my email, I explained the process, that we'd have to go and get it reviewed, get it looked at, make sure it's dead. We would try to mitigate our costs by first going to the engineer to see if they would cut it, because there was a power line nearby, and none of that was done. So we just closed all of that last meeting, and the board voted not to reimburse.
Yeah, I'd say that, I appreciate that, uh, clarifying that, because that is a misunderstanding on the email, it could be ready the way. Uh, my biggest concern again was getting it removed, because it was yet to be determined if it was at that point on the right of way, and I could not afford the risk of that thing falling, as always it was, especially after the two lightning strikes, I was getting a little antsy about it anyhow, but regardless, uh, I, I followed what was on the email, and if that was a misunderstanding, which should have been clear, because it's a $2,000 typo, in my opinion, so I, it is a misunderstanding of, of reading that, if that's the case, so. I would still ask for it to be reconsidered, uh, since it was on the county property, but that's up to you guys.
Mr. President, I would, um, again, I know that there's a misunderstanding on this, as we discussed at the last board meeting, and unfortunately, uh, most of us was out of town when this was happening, and that's where the misunderstanding came from, uh, from our engineer and, and, uh, so, uh, the tree was dead, it was definitely on the county right of way. Uh, the cost, uh, was $2,000 to remove it, which, that's probably a very reasonable cost to remove a tree that's close to a light line like that, electrical line. And, um, I would make a motion to, as I did the last board meeting, to, um, to pay, pay him $1,000 out of $2,000, because I do think that we have a, uh, liability as well, since it was on our right of way, and it was confirmed the tree was dead by, uh, an employee of ours before it was cut. And, uh, unfortunately, it was a misunderstanding, but my motion would be to pay him $1,000 out of the $2,000 that took him, uh, you know, that he had to pay to cut it.
All right, got a motion there, and a comment, Mr. Banks?
I'll second the motion.
All right. Got a motion by Gerald, second by Carl, in other discussion. Uh... I, I see, uh, that could, how it could have easily been mistaken, uh, and lack of, uh, right communication. But I got, uh, all around the county, too many trees on the right of way for me to start voting away from my process. Uh, we might start having people cut down trees and then come back and have a line for the folks to, to try to get paid. Uh, even though it was a lack of, of the right communication, uh, they might come in and say the same thing.
Right.
So, all in favor of the motion?
Mr. President, before you would, I, I would like to hear from Mike to make sure legally we can do this with the circumstances, since there's a motion on the table and a second, just to make sure legally we can pay him $1,000 out of the $2,000 if the board chooses to.
Sure, it's on our right of way.
Yeah, but is it, is, is, is our procedure, our policy, or is it just our procedure that we need?
He's asking a legal question, and you asking a process question, which is not a legal question. So legally, yes, you could do it if you wanted to do it, but it's not in accordance with the process, there's a process. Engineer reviews it, engineer reviews it, make sure it's on our right of way, make sure it's a hazard to the traveling public. He would, he would go to engineers, if they would do it, if engineer said no, it would get bids. Lowest bid would, would, uh, be approved, it would be cut, so that process was not followed. So legally, yes, process not in accordance with your process. So that's, that's the answer.
All right. All right. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All opposed? No. Motion carry. All right.
Mr. Griffin, you do make a good point, uh, we just want to make sure that all process is followed, because we do have a lot of trees out there that, that people can come back and cut and come back and ask for reimbursement, and that's what we don't, do not want. But the county was involved in this one, the process just didn't go as, as way it should have gone, so, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
It was approved to pay up to a thou-, uh, pay $1,000.
Greg, we have any more concerned citizens, you know?
Only the ones on the agenda, and next up on that one would be James Morris with ditch issues related to Pisgah Bottom Road.
Uh, Jane, um, Tim and I talked to Jane Morris outside, and I think I'm gonna go out there and take a look at that ditch, so I think we got that one solved. And the next one only is Woodwood South, I talked to him maybe the weekend. Uh, they got to, uh, do some more communication with, uh, Scott, and they probably will be here on another meeting.
Okay.
All right, moving right along, if there are no, not any more concerned citizen, we'll move to our public hearing, and now it'd be time for a tax assessor.
Open up.
Is he here?
Yeah, he's here.
Taking a motion for open up public hearing on it?
Second.
Got a motion by Sheila.
Second.
Second by Gerald. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. All right, Norman?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Cynthia and Ronnie, have y'all received any objections, timely filed objections? Okay, so the deadline to file objections was nine o'clock this morning, the county properly advertised and noticed the public, to my knowledge, we have not received any. So unless someone is here to speak up today and, and object, which is past the deadline of nine o'clock, I would ask the board to close the public hearing and, uh, vote to approve the, the tax rolls. Normally, we would set the next meeting, uh, to hear the equalization hearings, but I think we can finalize everything today since there were no objections filed timely, and, uh, I don't see a need to, to carry it over to the next meeting. Excuse me.
All right, is there a motion to close the public here?
Motion, second.
Motion by Trey, second by Sheila. All in favor?
Ayes.
All opposed? Motion carry. There, uh...
Cynthia, Ronnie, don't we need a motion for final approval?
Just wanna check the camera on, okay. Sorry about that.
All right.
As Ronnie was looking at it, uh, as you and I was talking outside, this is the first time in a while you said we ain't had someone to come in and object to one certain parcel anyway.
We may have one, it looks like.
Maybe, okay.
If it was filed timely, that's the main thing.
Yeah.
And, and the reason she's checking is the meeting starts at nine and the deadline is at nine, so...
Okay. Make sure of it. There's none here on my email.
Uh...
We always come back...
We can drop down there, yeah, uh, Tim, you here? We'll come back to you, uh, Norman, Cynthia, come back.
All right. First item I have is a request for the board to enter into an memorandum of agreement with the Mississippi Department of Transportation. This is the standard MOU between an LPA and MDOT when we receive federal money for a project. This one in specific is for the Gandel Road widening project from...
Motion.
Motion by Sheila, second by Trey, in the discussion?
I have some discussion, Tim, tell me, is it gonna be, is the whole road gonna be widened, or just down there by the school?
From the school back to where we have originally widened it to the west.
Okay. Okay, so it'll move the traffic better?
Right, it's roughly where Westfallon is.
Uh-huh.
Back, Westfallon back east to the school.
Okay.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
And Tim, if, if you would, uh, maybe get with Heath, because this is, uh, very important, uh, some very important information that we just okayed as well, and I know we have located in the past, but a lot of people are very interested in, in this road.
All right, I will.
You know, being widened.
Yeah, I got two more on here that are gonna be interesting, too.
Good deal.
Uh, before we go in forward, let me ask you this question, uh...
Okay.
And it might be on here. Do you have a... possibility of when this might get started? Reason why? Schools start when Thursday?
This, unfortunately, this one's gonna be a little while, this has got a 2025 funding allocation associated with it, so it's gonna be in 2025 before we're able to construct this.
So we'll have a while before we start getting the...
Yes, we're in the very preliminary stages.
But, but make sure that is put out there for information purposes as well, very good point, you know, to let people know that it's not gonna start this year or next year.
Okay.
Can y'all do an update on the intersection at 463 and Striplin, Catlet, Striplin Road Extension, where we are? Just do an update on all the road projects, put it on out there so people can, I get a lot of questions about, especially about what's going on on Bozeman with the utility relocation, when that's gonna be finished and construction started. Uh, I think it'd be a good public service announcement if you could do that.
Okay, we can do that.
All right, go ahead to the next one, Tim, since you up there.
Uh, on July 22nd, we received bids for the Southwood Drive Drainage Improvements Project. We received two bids, one of them was deemed irregular, one of them was over double the construction estimate price. We request that the board reject these bids and allow me to go out for a two-bid process, since the, uh, amount of that has increased, and I think we can get it underneath that and get a much better price than the, uh, close to $80,000 that we have.
Motion.
Second.
I got a motion by Sheila.
Second by Trey.
Second by Trey, discussion. If you will, somewhere the other, let those people down on Southwood Drive know...
Yes.
What's going on.
I will.
I'm pretty sure they were looking for something to start pretty quick.
I've been in contact with them regularly, they know that it was gonna be approved today, and I've, I've got two quotes ready, I'm gonna have a PO ready today, so this is not gonna delay anything.
Okay, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
Okay, I got two more things I just want to bring to the, I guess, the public's view. Uh, one of them is a, an actual agenda item, request that for reunion two, that the board submit the project checklist and the submission letter to request for advertising, just like we have as item 36 on here for, uh, reunion three. So basically, what we're asking for is the board to request MDOT to allow us to bid these two projects.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Sheila, second by Trey. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
And that's significant, we're about to begin these.
All right.
Have we already bought the land?
Yes.
Good.
Uh, Tim, before you go, while we got you up here, so we might not have to bring you back. On the consent item, we have number 31, 32, and 33. It's all, uh, utility permits, uh, basically for, most of them for AT&amp;T and...
Right.
Couple more entities there. It is, it, it involves a whole lot of streets.
It sure does.
Is there a process going on that, once they go put these, uh, utility down, to make sure that they are leaving the people driveway and leaving our right of way the way they found it?
All better. We, we try, well, driveways and stuff, yes, um, we, we don't give another permit until they fix stuff like that, we're kinda hamstrung with the fiber, or the communications companies, because we've got franchise agreements with us, and in each of those, it, it basically gives them free rein to do what they want to do. And so, we, we try our best to get them to bring it back into a decent-looking section afterwards, but we don't have a whole lot of leg to stand on right now.
But it, but is, is it not in the agreement for them to put it back the way that, way, way that it was, or are you...
It's not mentioned at all.
I would, I would ask to get with our legal and, uh, with our attorney and, and see, see if we can't come back and redo some of that agreement then.
Okay, I think those are things that are 25-year agreements, but...
Probably.
I'll, uh, yeah, we'll look into it.
Okay, thank you.
Because I know if one big machine, they set it down and it's turned this cable, uh, when we're pushing the cable through, no problem, but where that machine sets, sometime it really damaged, uh, our right of way and people driveway.
Oh, it's a constant problem.
The agreements with us and, and the right of way may be a little difficult to get fixed, but the, the, the personal property should be a different...
Well, it's not personal property, it's our right of way, but it's in front of somebody's house and they, they consider it theirs, they maintain it and keep it up and all that, so, you know, they want it back to smooth so they can mow it.
Five ways. Okay.
All right, if you will, can you just check with Mike and find that agreement, see what y'all can do?
Okay.
All right. Norman, Cynthia's back.
Okay, there were a few emails, but, um, I do not believe there are any objections that were filed timely. I believe you closed the public hearing and voted to no longer accept objections, so that's good. Uh, talked with Cynthia and Ronnie, and we do need to, uh, set August the 15th for, um, the date for any possible equalization changes, um, that need to be made, so just ask that you make a motion and do that at this time.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Trey, second by Sheila.
Uh, you wanna read the motion then?
You got it?
I got it, you don't need to read it out.
That she, yeah, you can go Sheila once.
Here's the motion. Sorry, I was objections, it's, uh, August 15th. Start right there, acknowledge the objections.
Acknowledge the objections and set Monday, August 16th, 20... August, that says 16th.
I know, but that's last year.
August 15th, 2022, at 5:00 PM, as a date for individual equalization hearings on parcels for those who have timely filed objections thereto, and for the final approval of said rolls.
Do you acknowledge?
Acknowledge those protests presented by the tax assessor, direct the chancery clerk to communicate with each protester as to the date of said hearing.
All right, we got that motion, and you got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Five of both, thanks, Norman.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
All right.
We haven't done the, uh, before it starts, we haven't done the consent items, I don't believe, have we?
When the, oh, yeah, we right.
Huh?
We right, we didn't do the consent.
Make a motion for consent items.
Second. All right, motion by Gerald, second by Trey, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye, Mr. Wick.
Motion carry. Drew, you next. Scott, you, if you wanna get yours, we'll have to wait on you.
Morning, board of supervisors.
All right.
Buildings and grounds has one item, uh, we are requesting to award the bid for the playground and exercise equipment at Sulphur Springs Park to Great Southern Recreation.
All right. I make that motion to grant that bid.
I'll second it. How much was it?
Second by Sheila.
Six hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Six fourteen?
Six fourteen, eight forty-eight.
And all of it funded by nursing home money. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carry.
Drew, just a little update on the shooting range, um, where are we on that, or can you give an update at this point?
Yes, sir, we had a, uh, pre-bid this past week, we had one sub come, right now, we're looking at one contractor that's interested, uh, talked with the architect, he's gonna be calling around, following up with some other contractors in the area, and we're gonna have that bid opening Wednesday at... And we're gonna have that bid opening Wednesday at two P.M.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, now in your time, Scott.
Thank you.
I'm so used to going after Tim, I just stepped up there. Uh, morning, Mr. President and Board of Supervisors.
Morning.
I have two things on the agenda. Uh, the first one is, well, if you acknowledge draft minutes planned and zoning July fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Sheila, second by Trey. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Right.
Uh, next item, number fifty, Holy Trinity Anglican Church. This was a site plan for a classroom addition located at four thirty-two Bozeman Road. Property zoned issue one, since Supervisor District Two. Planning and zoning approved July fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. They did have some questions on a demo plan at the P N Z. meeting. Uh, this does not affect the existing parking and, which is fine. And then the utilities were reviewed for the, by myself and county engineer, and we saw no issues on that.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Trey, second by Sheila. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
Uh, next item is Glenda Thomas, a small home in a residential district. It's on a medical hardship located on P. Road, Supervisor District Four.
All right, you hear that, Mr. Bank?
Um.
Was that a motion you made, uh, Mr. Bank?
Yes, I, I did make the motion.
I'll second.
Uh, motion by Mr. Bank, second by Gerald, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carry, all right.
Uh, Mr. President, uh, the board meeting, I mean, the, during the hearings we had the other day, you had some questions on some stuff with the planning zoning with the inspectors. I will be bringing that information up to the next board meeting, just making you aware of that.
All right, sounds great.
Thank you, Scott.
Yep.
The lawyer back in town?
He is at a doctor.
All right. All right, where we at, uh, lawyer, Mike?
All right. Good morning again, I've got, uh, two items listed on the agenda. There's another, there's a third one not on the agenda. I'd like to take that one up first, uh, that involves the Gluckstat sinkhole issue. Uh, we've had a discussion about the board approved allowing up to thirty-five thousand dollars from the funds we withheld from the Gluckstat road budget to give back to them to repair sinkholes. We've had that discussion. In fact, we've already written the check and sent the check to Gluckstat. And they are presently repairing the sinkholes, to my understanding. But we've never had an agreement to do it legally in the minutes. So we gotta backtrack a minute. And this amendment to the resolution authorizes you to take up to thirty-five thousand dollars from the funds we withheld from the Gluckstat budget to give back to them to approve, uh, repairing their sinkholes. So this makes it legal, so they can't come back and say, we never got the money. Uh, you know, so, so this agreement is, makes what you already agreed to do legal.
Motion.
All right, we got a motion by Trey.
Second.
Second by Gerald. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carry.
All right, now we also have to make legal what you already did with the playground equipment. So you just voted to approve an invoice for playground equipment. Now you gotta make it legal. So you make it legal by approving this resolution. And what it does, it pretty much gives you the context of what you're already done. Uh, this board in two thousand and eighteen received eight hundred and eighteen thousand dollars plus from the Madison County Nursing Home. Now that's money they set aside for sports equipment, exercise equipment for us. But we do it on a reimbursement basis. So once you approve the project, we finish the project and, and they reimburse us the money. So this goes through all of it. So they set aside eight eighteen, five eighty for us. You've spent everything except the amount of six hundred and forty-eight thousand. So there's six hundred and forty-eight thousand left in their account for you. So what you're doing now, you're, you are asking the Madison County Nursing Home to basically give you all the rest of the money. And most of that money will be spent for the playground equipment that you just approved. And in the event that there's any money left, we're asking that they already also approve money for lighting at the park. So you are basically, this resolution is a request to them to go ahead and set aside all the rest of this money, mostly for the playground equipment, but also for lighting, if any money's left.
All right.
And we met with them and they agreed to it already, so it's no controversy.
All right, I make the motion that, uh, approve this resolution.
You're going motion.
And second by Carl, any other discussion?
Mr. President, I just wanna maybe clear things up a little bit. The bid that we approved from Great Southern Recreation is six hundred and fourteen thousand, or six hundred and fifteen thousand. And so what you're asking is, um, the nursing home is, is gonna give us back six hundred and forty-eight thousand is, is what they have left over for the, for the board.
Yes.
And so what you're asking is for that six hundred and forty-eight, or that sixteen, six hundred and fifteen thousand be paid out of the six forty-eight. And then whatever's left over, go towards lighting?
Correct.
For that area which hadn't been approved?
They've approved it.
No, I'm talking about us.
Well, you're approving it now.
So we're approving the lighting as well?
What this resolution says is that if, uh, you are asking them to set aside the majority of money for the playground equipment and the infrastructure and the ADA compliance on playground equipment, that's gonna be most of it. There may be cost overruns in that
Right.
which will come out of this money. If there's any money left over, it won't be much. But to the extent that there's anything, what you're saying to them is that we wanna use that for lighting.
How much is the lighting? Refresh by memory.
I don't know.
The estimate, oh, the estimate's forty-nine grand, that, that's why we have budgeted total.
Do we have, uh, do we have, uh, bids or anything on it yet?
I do not believe so.
Okay, so basically, we have not approved lighting for that yet.
No, no.
Okay.
This, this is just, uh, asking the nursing home board, so we won't have to go back to them again and say, hey, uh, can we use this for lighting?
Yeah, right.
It's just be there until we decide to do lighting.
We've met with the nursing home board and they approved this as a eligible use of the money, lighting.
Okay, and that's, and that's what I wanna make it clear in my mind is that we have not approved lighting yet. But we have forty-nine thousand set aside.
No.
Or in the budget.
It was budgeted at forty-nine, yes, sir.
Okay.
No, we ain't saying this, we ain't saying that, uh, we finna do lighting. It's all about the nursing home.
Yeah, I understand that, and that's what I'm trying
All right, this, this resolution is an agreement between you and the nursing home to go ahead and commit all your, the rest of your money
Yeah.
for playground and for lighting. When you get to the lighting issue, then there'll be bids, there'll be, you have to go through your process. But we won't have to go back to the nursing home and request money for lighting.
Unless we don't approve the lighting.
True.
That's really where I'm going to with this, is that we're saying that to the nursing home that this is, part of this money is going to the lighting. And we do not know what the lighting's gonna cost. We know what the, is in the budget, but we haven't done, uh, any bids out on it yet. So why would we put it towards lighting and just leave it? Uh, or word it another way to where it could go to lighting, if this board approves lighting there? Can we reword it again to where?
You could do that, but also you could just leave it like this, and if you don't approve lighting, we go back with another resolution and say, use it for something else.
But that's what, that's what I'm saying though, is, is that can we word it to where we don't have to go back to the nursing home, but we could use it for something else without going back to the nursing home?
The money for something else without going back to the nursing home?
If, if we change it.
That's what they gave it to us for.
Yeah, but I mean, it may be something else for the park that wanna use it for. And then don't we have to go back? I mean, if we, if the board don't want to, that's fine, but if we don't approve the lighting, then you gotta go back to the nursing home and get their approval again.
Yes.
Well, i- if we don't approve this here, we got to go back to the nursing home.
Well, I'm not saying don't approve, because I'm in favor of approving it for the, you know, six hundred and fifteen. And I'm okay with this unless, you know, just as long as we have a clear understanding, you know, that we have to go back if we don't approve for the lighting.
All right.
If you make the change, if you make the change, if you want to go back to the nursing home, I think y'all leave like this. Let, let forty-nine go there for lighting, and then we get this, uh, bid on lighting, and we got forty-nine thousand to apply to. And that's it, you do, the nursing home wants to go back in.
All right, we got a motion in a second on this resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion care.
And I just wanna remind you, this is federal money. They're reimbursing you, but they're gonna be reimbursed from the Department of Health and Human Services. So they've gotta be really careful about eligible uses, and they've already said lighting is eligible use. So, all right. All right, so those were simple. Now the third issue that may be, may be, uh, less simple is this handbook issue. And I think Loretta Phillips is somewhere out there, Loretta, hello? So I hand it out to you. The suggested changes for the employee revision. This is an annual review, this is something that we have to do as a normal course of government. So your committee met several times, and if in, Mr. Higgins, we got involved, you, you weren't here when we started. So we shortened up the handbook, we simplified the language, we made it more understandable. But still, there's some policy issues you've gotta review, and I'll go over them. So we changed five point one, six point eight, six point nine, six point ten. Five point one is simple, it's just a technical change about compensatory leave. We already do it now, so it's not controversial. But we did change it. Now, six point eight, six point nine, six point ten involves random drug testing, it involves medical marijuana, how you're gonna treat it, and it involves the road department, because that's the only department where random testing is required by the federal government. And under federal law, no matter what Mississippi did, marijuana is still illegal. And employees who test positive in the road department are subject to disciplinary action by federal law. But we have to say that, you have to agree to that, okay? So let's, let's talk about six point eight, six point nine, six point ten. So, six point eight, we passed a medical, the Medical Cannabis Act. And under the law, employers may choose to continue to refuse to hire, discharge, and discipline employees uh, who use medical cannabis. Uh, but you may choose to allow the use since it is now legal substance. So it's up to you, it's your choice to say, even though medical cannabis is a prescribed use, still, we can refuse to hire you, we're gonna discharge you, we're gonna discipline you if you test positive for medical cannabis under prescription. You can choose to do that. Your committee suggests the proposed policy is that we do not subject persons with a medical marijuana prescription. We propose that we do not refuse to hire, discharge, or discipline. And this treatment aligns with your treatment of other prescribed drugs. That tests positive for substance that's prescribed, you don't fire them, you don't discipline them because it's prescribed. Proof of prescription is required in the same manner as proof of other prescription required. Uh, so this is a suggestion that committee's making that if your employee tests positive for medical marijuana that's prescribed, that they do not fall under mandatory discipline. I
I have a question.
Yes.
So what if, um, they're speeding and they're using medical marijuana and they wreck the car? They're speeding.
This is what I'm asking. I'm saying, um, this is a question. If they're speeding, that's another issue.
Yeah.
It is, it's a crime.
That's another issue, that's, they shouldn't be speeding, they should be complying with the speed laws of Mississippi.
Right.
The driving law.
But if, and, and we already have post accident testing. So if they're speeding and they have an accident and this drug is found up in their system, and they say, oh, by the way, it, it's marijuana comes up in their system, they say, well, I have a prescription. All right, you could discipline them for speeding, but you have to choose whether you discipline them for marijuana, if they're prescription. So this is a choice, this is why, you know, we're bringing this to you. Your handbook committee says uh, the state of Mississippi allows you to file them still, even if it's prescribed use. Your committee is saying
Who's the committee?
Committee is, uh, your H.R. Director.
Right.
Your lawyer, and your administrator. It was Shelton, Shelton was fully involved, and then Greg was fully involved at the end, that's committee.
Do we not have any elected officials on that committee?
No, sir. But you're the committee, you decide. You decide, that's why we're bringing it to you today. This, these are your proposals.
Okay.
All right, you can say, go back and go to the elected officials.
Mike, could I interject something?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Under that particular scenario.
Yeah.
All drivers are still subject to all, uh, DUI enforcement laws. So that scenario, they would still be, uh, uh, under the influence.
Thank you.
Yeah, it'd be under the state law, it wouldn't be falling under, under the county law.
Shouldn't Randy though be on that committee, or Randy's appointee be on that committee too? Do we have somebody from Randy's department on that committee?
What you could do, you could say, circulate this to the elected officials and to Sheriff's Office, they will come back and, and do that.
I, I think that's probably the wisest thing to do, and just get their thoughts and opinions, and we may not go with them. I, I mean, or we may, you know.
Let me, let me, let me say this, I think if we nothing gets you sheriff, I think if we add the sheriff to the committee, we gonna get basically the state, uh, look of things. Because that's what he got to enforce.
I, I think you're right.
Uh, the state. We're looking as Madison County as our employees. And, and I think it's two, two different levels of the law there. Uh, sheriff could be dealing with driving, uh, and other type use. But we are looking as a employee being able to be hired or drive a piece of equipment other than a vehicle.
Yeah.
Vehicles follow on the state.
And, and that's true, but would this do anything to our insurance rates? Or have we asked if we make a decision not to, or if we make a decision to go down this road?
We haven't asked, by knowledge.
That's what I'm saying that, you know, this affects every person in the county that drives.
Right.
Or actually affects every person in the county, or could in one aspect. Or actually affects every person in the county or could in one aspect or another, but especially the one that operates a counted vehicle. And, and that's the reason I, I'm just saying that I honestly believe the elected officials should have a say in what they think and what they would like to relay to the board of supervisors.
Once again.
Okay.
People that drive the vehicle gonna fall under the state law. We talking about people that not.
We talking about federal law.
Correct me if I'm saying it wrong, right? We talking about people that we finna deny them the opportunity to get hired for the county that they live in. Just because they are taking marijuana that is legal.
Prescribed.
Prescribed marijuana. We don't want y'all no more.
Yeah.
That's what we finna say. And down, down with driving uh, uh, the vehicle, uh, that, that could be held by the state. Equipment, uh, there's drugs now that say do not drive or operate equipment till you see how this drug uh, performs on you. And this marijuana is no different than any other drug.
Does this have anything to do with the equipment operation and that kind of stuff of what we're talking about here as far as passing?
If you test positive for marijuana and you could give them a prescription, then you will be disciplined for a positive drug test. If you wreck equipment, that takes, that, that's another investigation, you know?
Cause I, I don't want to do what Paul just said as far as, you know, handicap employees to be hired with the county. I don't want to do that for sure, but I want to make sure I understand uh, as far as driving equipment and if there's an accident there, uh, how does this policy come into play or does it at all?
If it's a road crew.
Right.
Distinction, as I said earlier, the road crew, that's under federal law. Marijuana is illegal under federal law regardless of whether it's prescribed or not.
It's illegal.
Illegal under federal law.
That's driving a truck, not driving a bulldozer.
He said equipment.
I, I, I'm talking about equipment and equipment can be a vehicle. It can be any kind of uh, road equipment or. I'm just trying to find out the answer because this is, this is the first time that we've really discussed this. I mean, we discussed it in the past. But this is the first time we discussed it and, and we just need to get it wrong.
These are suggested policy decisions for you. You asking the right questions. You can sit us back and say, let's do my work. But this is what you're there for. Make, it is it's it. So let's go to the next one.
Well, you, you're right. I want to answer that. We're here to make decisions, but we're here to make decisions with good information, which I'm not sure I'm getting all the information that I need at this point.
Okay.
So.
And that's fair.
Okay.
Let's go to the next one. Six point nine. Now, you all know that we have a problem with random drug tests in this county. So right now, your handbook that's currently enforced calls for drug testing that's random, that's pre-employment, that's under reasonable suspicion.
Uh, put your careful mute.
Thank you, Ms. President.
And that's post injury situation. So your handbook now, there's four cases where you test for drugs. Three of them seem to be okay. The first one, random drug testing, that's not okay because it's not being done. There's an ex- there's uh, there's, there's a situation in this county that's different from office to office. If it's an elected official office, if it's a road crew office, it's different. And once you start enforcing the law differently, then you begin to have an issue with liability, with lawsuits, with racial equity issues. And uh, and I get concerned. So we approached Madison on this and Madison said, if you have a policy that you don't enforce, then you better not have a policy. Cause if it's on a piece of paper and you say you're going for it and you don't, then you're liable. We got to cover you. So they recommend that either have a policy or don't have a policy. That's what they said. So because of that guidance, your committee is saying let's remove random drug testing from your drug policy because you don't enforce it. You don't enforce it. We've been over this months and months and months and months and you don't enforce it. And your elected officials, some of them don't want to enforce it. So we just removed it. So this is our recommendation. For everybody except road department because that's mandatory. It's federal.
Okay. Let, let me keep saying that. Let me make sure I'm understanding you. You saying road department. You talking about road.
Federal trucks, federal.
Trucks.
Yes, sir.
There's a lot of guys down there that don't drive trucks.
I understand. If you drive a DOT licensed truck, then that's a, that's under federal law. Marijuana is illegal regardless of whether it's under prescription and they require random drug testing. So if you drive a, that's kind of drug, uh, truck, that's federally licensed. So that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah. I just want to make sure our board members understand.
Mike, Mike.
We have, but, but just a minute. We have a, we have a situation in the drug court. There was an individual who was uh, tested positive for marijuana. This person was kept on. Uh, recent way of the situation where in the Circuit Lights Office, somebody tested positive and they were let go. In the road department, somebody tested positive and they were let go. So it's inequitable. It's, it's, it's going to get us and we got to do something. So we're saying, remove it. Cause Madison said if you don't have one, if you don't enforce it, you might as well not have one. So we're saying don't have one.
Yeah, I, I know this has been a real problem over the last eighteen months with some elected officials.
Yes.
That do not want to, or I'm going to say don't want to enforce a drug policy. But man, it's hard to vote not to have a drug policy. I, I'll be honest with you because it's just.
You have a drug, you have a drug policy, it just doesn't include random drug tests.
Random drug test.
I got you.
I'm leaving it with you. This is, these are our recommendations. Uh.
But bouncing back to the first uh, issue you brought up about operating equipment and having a prescription for weed and not having a prescription for weed. Hypothetically speaking, if somebody wrecked a track hoe in the investigation, if they didn't have a prescription, they would be automatically fired if they tested positive?
No. No.
If we approved this, they would not be.
If we approve this, Greg, you want to speak on it?
Well, if.
It.
If they don't have a prescription.
If they don't have a prescription, then you would have a post accident testing that tested positive without any justification.
Hmm.
At, at that point, I believe you would have, under our current policy, I believe you would have grounds for dismissal, but that's part of the issue is.
Grounds for dismissal doesn't mean dismissal.
Correct. It's not being applied equally across all departments, right?
It's not applied equally in this county. It's not. So it's up to your discretion uh, of the elected official, I mean, the official are yours.
That'll go for any illegal narcotics then, just grounds for dismissal.
Yes.
Alright, going back, if they did have a prescription and they tested positive operating a track hoe after an accident, how would that change things from if they didn't have a prescription? At where we are now.
If they did have a prescription, they test positive marijuana, you are saying they cannot be fired or disciplined because they've provided their prescription. So it's a legal drug. As the sheriff said, you could, you DUI, that's another issue. But if they just test positive for it.
Even if it's said on the bottle or whatever, that you can't be operating heavy equipment under this substance, which a lot of them do, a lot of those painkillers and whatnot do, even though they're prescription drugs.
That's not a law.
Sheriff, would you, would you want to speak on this?
That's a recommendation.
Yeah. These are recommendations.
What, what are y'all?
We're bringing to the board of supervisors.
What are y'all recommending, just to follow it up with Supervisor Baxter's question there? What are y'all recommending? The committee is recommending that we put anything in the handbook saying that if you are under this type of prescription, that you cannot operate any type of equipment?
Let's read the recommendation. Fourth line. Proposed policy takes the stance of not subjecting persons with medical marijuana prescription to refusal to hire, discharge, or discipline. This treatment aligns the county's treatment of medical marijuana with other prescription medications. Proof of a prescription is required in the same manner as proof of any other prescription is required for the drug testing process.
But does, but it does not say in this that if you are prescribed this marijuana, that you cannot operate equipment. And I understand what Supervisor, I understand what Supervisor Baxter's saying is that most time you'll have it on that prescription, but you may not have it either. And if you don't have it, uh, are y'all recommending anything there for the handbook?
No.
Why not? Why wouldn't you? Why wouldn't you recommend it? I mean, what would, what would be your reasons and why?
If you want to, if you want to have a distinction or uses of heavy equipment, if you want to say we want to exempt you from this policy where you cannot use medical marijuana for heavy equipment, you could do that.
Cause you have someone on a piece of equipment and, and they could be high and, and will not be able to operate the equipment to their standard and definitely endanger people's life, endanger their life.
True, but there are other drugs out there right now that do the same thing. Say the same thing on the prescription.
Right.
Say the same thing.
Don't disagree with that.
Uh.
But, but what we can do now though is, is um, is sometimes, you can either, you can fire them now though.
Yeah.
Let, let me ask you this question. Uh, and then Loretta, I think Loretta got something to say. Is, is this something y'all want to consider executive session or want to keep on the open section like it?
This is not executive session because we're not talking about an employee. We're talking about.
All of.
Policy. So it's not executive session. I wish, I wish it was. I could say some other things.
I, I, I personally believe there's got to be some type of policy in place for people using illegal drugs and operating heavy equipment and there's an accident. There has to be some recourse we can have. I mean, that would be bananas not to.
Yeah.
I, I agree with that.
It's not a legal drug, illegal drug.
It is with the federal.
Federal.
Not illegal anymore. It's not with the state of Mississippi.
No, I, I agree with that, but I.
It's medical marijuana, which is prescribed drug. Look, we, we have to change the handbook. We have to update it. It's the time to do it before October. Employees, they're about to have their annual review, you know, where we talking to them about handbook changes and so forth. This is the time to do it. We've been through this process intensively. We've reviewed the law. We make recommendations. If this board doesn't agree with them, fine. Tell us what you want to do.
Greg, is there a test for, say, in the past, OxyContin or Oxycodon? Is that something you test for after an equipment accident?
Uh, Loretta may be able to speak to it better than I am.
Breta?
But I do believe so, yes.
Here.
Opioids are part of a post, post accident uh, drug screening. Yes, sir.
Good morning, boy. Um, Latoya Thompson, who is Mike Espy Assistant. We actually spoke to MEA concerning the medical marijuana. There are certain things that when we send an employee to be tested for, there are certain drugs like uh, marijuana, cocaine. There are certain things that they would test for. If an employee tests positive, let's just say for a medical, for marijuana. Uh, there's a medical review officer who is someone with the MEA clinic or wherever the employee is tested. That individual get in contact with the employee to find out if there's a, if he have a prescription for it. If they are told that they have a prescription for it, they will also check with the pharmacist to see if a prescription has been issued in that individual name to make sure that that person is um, prescribed. If they find out that information, when we get the test result back, the test result, they would not tell you, they do not tell you this person was tested positive for this drug or another drug, they're going to send us back a negative review, a negative um, test result. If they find out that an employee is legally taking um, whether it's marijuana or whether it's some other drug that's been prescribed and they may say, you know, do not use this uh, drug while driving. And they do, and they have an accident. The medical review officer is the one that determine if that person was legally taking this medication or not. And if they deemed that it was legal, then they will send us a negative test result.
Question. That pro- is that process used on pre-employment?
Yes.
Process?
Yes. So when Mike was speaking on earlier because like, well, what Ms. Griffin said earlier, there's a, there's a problem with the random drug testing. In the past, it seemed as though when we were random drug testing, we were only drug testing the um, road department. And some of those guys have D, DOT license. They are required by federal law to have the ran, to do the drug testing. We are currently still testing the um, the DOT drivers because we are required by law. They have to um, be tested. But no one else in the county are being tested only for pre-employment and post accident. Other than that, we are not currently testing.
So Loretta, in the past, when equipment operators, and you may not remember a specific instance, had an accident and was on a legally prescribed drug, say OxyContin, what did we do?
It, it depends on the, the result we got back. If, if that person was legally on this medication and the medical review board, when they reviewed it and they investigated and they saw that they were legally on this medication, they're going to send us a negative, a result. So at that point, there is nothing for us to do. But in the past, if that happened and they tested positive, that employee was terminated.
Let me ask you something. Uh, if it's the medical uh, review board is checking it and they check it, that that drug is high, higher than the level that they should be taking. Did you get any results on, on that or you just get that negative review?
They're going to give us a negative or either a positive um, result. Now, the medical review officer that I keep referring to, that is the doctor um, that's at the clinic to wherever the employee go. Because I asked, okay, who, who do you deem as the medical review officer? And that person is the one that would, would get in contact with the pharmacist and all this. They will only send me back a negative or
Positive.
A positive. Now, there have been, um, there have been situations where um, if there's a posi- positive result, it would tell me positive for what type of medication. It may say positive for marijuana or something along that line.
The only thing I don't want to do is box us in so we can't terminate an employee if there is an accident and they do test positive for prescription or non-prescription drugs.
Okay. I understand what you, what you, what you're saying and that's where we're trying to get at. Cause like I say, right now, if a person is, they test positive for it and they have a prescription for it, I'm not going to, we are not going to know that they test positive. We're going to get a negative result. So there is no, as long as they have a prescription for it, there's no way for the county to know that this person tested positive for marijuana because the result that we're going to get is going to say uh, medical, I mean, going to say negative. But if they do not have the prescription, then that is different. They would tell us this person tested positive for marijuana or cocaine.
Policy can be based off the test results we get back from the medical review officer.
Yes. M E A or Trust Care or Baptist, wherever the person goes to have the drug test, majority of the time when it's special around here, they go to a M E A clinic. They go to a M E A clinic and they the one that does the, the handle the, the testing and they send me the result back.
So if there, I'm talking out of school here, but if there was a lawsuit, which sometimes there is in these cases, it would be the, the, the evidence will be based off what we were provided with.
Correct. Correct. There have been times where it's.
We would lose that if we find that employee.
If we do what now?
Alright.
That's what Loretta said. If the medical review officer found that that person was under legal prescription, the report Loretta would be that they would be negative. So we went extra legally and tried to do something else and there's a lawsuit, we would lose that.
Uh, so, so what you just tried helped me out a lot, uh, on the process, uh, on, on determining here. Cause I look like the process would help us, uh, the way you, way, way, way with the medical review board, uh, that would protect us.
Right, because the only thing that I will have, the only thing that the county will have to go on are those test results.
Yeah.
That's it. Because we're not, I mean, even, I'm not in a position to where you can call to the pharmacist or call to an individual doctor to try to find out if there's, uh, if they have issued a prescription for a certain medication because you got HIPAA laws involved and the only thing we have to go by is the information from the test results.
Okay. That definitely.
If, if the process helps us, you determine the process. If you tell us the process, the new process is we're not gonna random drug test, that we won't do it. Well, we, we don't do it now. But it's not a policy now. So whether that person tests positive or negative, nobody would know because we wouldn't even do it. Cause you would be voting not to do random drug testing. It'd be pre-employment, but reason suspicion and post accident. That's it and not random.
That's what you're proposing.
Yes, sir. Because we don't do it anyway. We've been around and round, round and round on this for a year. And Madison says, if you're not gonna enforce it, don't have a policy. And we don't enforce it. So it's a recommendation to the board.
I'm in agreement with those three, uh, levels there. Unless we just can't get it from everybody in the county and I, and I think we've been trying a year and had to get it, uh, everybody in the county to do it. And, and I think we still at the end that we can't.
Okay.
What's, what's the direction?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw out a motion that we, uh, do what you saying, uh, vote for pre-employment, uh, post.
Reasonable, uh, reasonable suspicion, upon reasonable suspicion, pre-employment and post accident.
Yeah. That gonna be my motion. Uh.
Someone might say the motion.
Why you wanna say that?
Say it in a sentence.
Yeah.
Sentence so we have it all.
After we pass it, if this pass, Mike. Then go ahead and give her, give her the answer.
Motion should be the Mass County Board of Supervisors will subject employees, uh, non, non DOT employees to, uh, drug testing based upon pre-employment upon reasonable suspicion and post accident.
That's my motion. Taking my seat. Any other discussion?
Sheriff?
I, I do just wanna point out, there is a law enforcement exclusion for that. There's a law enforcement exclusion for that. I just wanna point that out.
Uh, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
No.
Vote shouldn't carry.
Want no vote?
What'd you vote, Carl?
I voted yes.
Ah, okay. Alright, four one vote.
Thank you, Mike.
Let me go west now. Alright, alright, Mike, you get through with Mike. Greg, you next.
Good morning. Just a few things for you today. The first item I would like you to consider is item fifty-four and it is approval of an insurance agent of record. This is something the county had up until about twenty fifteen. And essentially what this person does is ensure that both the county and the insurance company are acting correctly within the confines of the insurance plan. Uh, that insurance plan is a hundred and fifty, two hundred page medical document. And right now that falls on the shoulders of the H R director and the county administrator. There are two things that I do not wanna mess up, people's paychecks and people's insurance. And almost anything else is fixable. And to be fair, paychecks and insurance are relatively fixable as well, but I would not like to cause any extra concern for county employees. Having a third party monitor the performance of the insurance plan and the county as it relates to the insurance plan is very beneficial to everyone involved.
Alright. Got a motion, Matt Carl? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Sheila. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I do. Um, what do we, what will we be paying for this?
About twenty-nine grand a year.
How much?
About twenty-nine thousand dollars a year out of that five point seven five million dollar insurance fund.
How does Bancorp South plays into this?
Banc, I do not know how, the agent of record that, that, uh, has, has been presented to you is Fisher Brown Botchel. They do our property and casualty.
How does Bancorp South play in this?
I don't think they do.
I, I think, I think they do in some form because we have them hired now. Some way or another, and I'm not sure how they play in, but we pay them probably twenty thousand a year. And that's why we dropped the, that's why we dropped actually the record of agent back in twenty sixteen. Is because they do play something in there. I just don't know what they play, but I think they play a role between the county and the insurance. I believe they do.
Loretta standing up.
Oh, yes.
Really, when Loretta come in, they play like a consultant wise.
Yes.
That would be, that they roll.
Yes, Bancorp South is currently the consultant. Once, um, back in two thousand and fifteen, when, um, the agent of record was dissolved, I think in maybe two thousand and seventeen, eighteen, Bancorp South came on as a consultant. And you're correct, we pay them twenty thousand dollars a week, twenty thousand dollars a year.
Is this gonna take the place of them then?
If a, before, prior to, when we had an agent of record, we did not have a consultant.
That's right.
Because the consultant is their responsibility to do what a consultant does plus more.
But I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, Greg didn't know anything about it, which he should have, you know, with being under his name. And he's bringing it up today. But what I'm seeing, what I'm hearing, and I don't know this, is that Bancorp South is doing the same thing that we're asking for? Or is there a difference?
There's a difference.
Okay.
Yeah.
Bank, yes, there's a difference. The agent of record, they will be, they will have the responsibility of negotiating. Just say if the board, just like when we changed over from, um, Blue Cross to U M R, health insurance, that would be the agent of record responsibility to go out, to, um, shop the market, to bring the counter back the best provider at the best possible rate. To make sure that we are providing the employee with the best service. Um, the con.
Who did that when, when we changed over to, to our current provider?
Shelton and I.
You and Shelton did?
Yes, sir.
I thought so.
Yes, sir.
Anyway, I'm just trying to figure out why we need both.
Well, that, that's the thing. Like I said, when we have a agent of record, we did not have a consultant. The consultant came in and what we normally would do with a consultant, if there's a question, um, concerning, um, a contract or a possible vendor or something, Shelton and I have both, we get in contact with the, um, with the consultant to see what do they know? And pretty much what they do right now is they'll come in and they assist as needed with, um, open enrollment.
And that's what Bancorp South did as well.
That's what, I'm saying, that's what Bancorp South currently role is. But when we had an agent of record, there was not a consultant.
They did that.
Yes, sir.
So bank, and I'm, and I'm remembering now, is that we did away with it in twenty sixteen.
Correct.
And, and Bancorp South come in twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen.
Something like that. And so they're actually doing what we're talking about needed to be done as far as installation between the county and the insurance.
They do not go out and shop the market to bring in the best provider for the health done and vision and, um, even bringing in the best provider for the stop loss. They do not handle any of that responsibility.
We need both of them?
No, we wouldn't need both. I don't, I mean, you could.
That, and that's.
Because it's two different, it's two different things. Like I say, what the consultant does, I guess it's sort of like an attorney. You reach out, oh, I'm sorry. I mean, I mean, I say that to say because a consultant is there as needed. If there's a problem, if there's, if we have a question, then we'll reach out to the consultant. That's where they come in. But a agent of record, they are the one that will actually go out, bring in the best provider for the medical done and vision. They negotiate the prices. If there's, um, a situation to where, um, an employee reach out to me because they're having trouble with a claim, um, instead of me personally handling that, that is what the agent of record, that's, that's their, that's part of their responsibility. So a agent of record and a consultant, there is a big difference. They do, the agent of record does everything and the consultant does a small portion of it. If that makes sense to you.
I think if we go with this company, uh, we won't need Bancorp South anymore. That'll be twenty thousand. Say what, Carl?
I'd like to amend my motion to, uh, also include that we, um, uh, eliminate Bancorp South contract. I think it's, it's lost in money anyway.
Eliminate Bancorp South.
Go ahead and send them those.
Or South out of it.
Well.
Your motion is second. Are you still second to Sheila?
Uh, I don't know. I, I.
I second it.
I withdraw my second, yeah.
I second.
I, I wanna still hear some, hear something though.
An, an agent of record in the building here who may be able to provide a little further
Please.
explanation to the board on what the difference between a consultant and an agent of record is.
Okay.
Yep. Well, good morning and, uh, my name's Brian Johnson. I'm a executive vice president of F B B I Insurance. I have my colleague with me, Angela White, who will be doing the hefty lifting and day-to-day operations if this is approved. Um, we're talking about, and just for clarity, two separate things. Uh, currently you have Bancorp South, who to my understanding helps with the open enrollment. Is that correct? We will not be doing that. We will not be replacing.
Y'all do that.
We can. However, we do not want to, uh, replace anyone at this, at this opportunity. Our intent is to number one, uh, be responsible for the procurement of insurance services. So right now it's my understanding you guys are with United Healthcare. Uh, there's more than a United Healthcare out there. I don't know the last time when an analysis was put together of deductibles plans in a comparison to what's available in the marketplace. We'll be responsible for that. Number two, we also have some, uh, enhanced services from a technology standpoint. We, uh, presented to Ms. Loretta our mobile app where employees will be able to, and Greg also view their benefits from their mobile device. Um, so technology is a part of that. Also high dollar claims and, you know, you do have some. We will be, um, an advocate on that behalf. And also from a privacy issue, uh, Loretta mentioned HIPAA, will also insulate the county in that regard. So these are two separate things. Uh, we are not replacing Bancorp South. They'll be responsible in their role of what they're doing under that agreement and this is totally separate. So should not be convoluted or any confusion in that regard. So I hope that clears up any confusion.
It do, uh, but any other questions, DeBrian? Before I carry this motion?
I don't have it, DeBrian, but maybe the H R person, um, Loretta, if you would. I, I hear what Brian's saying. But I'm also hearing, that's what Bancorp South is helping with as well, with the exception of going out and looking for better insurance or a different insurance.
Bancor, Bancorp South, they assist with, um, yearly open enrollment.
Yes, they do, but they also help with claims.
No.
High pri, high dollar claims? Or have you and Shelton been handling those?
Um, the high dollar claim, that comes in with the, um, with the stop loss carrier.
Okay.
They're the one that handles the, um.
So we have that in place already.
Yes, but that is also shopped out. I mean, you know, you draw decide on that also.
And, and if we, if we keep both, somebody's gonna be paying for this. Someone, someone's gonna be paying for it. They have to. And so therefore, our insurance rates will probably go up if we keep both. Now, I hear Mr. Banks's, uh, motion, which, you know, do away or, or do away with Bancorp South. That's his motion that's on the table. And, and if that's the case and, and if the cost is twenty-nine thousand, as administrator said, and we paid twenty, you know, the rates probably won't increase a whole lot off of that. I'm guessing. I don't really know.
With the, um, with the information that have been submitted this year, going with the agent of record, there will not be an increase to, uh, employee's premium.
Yeah, I, I understand that.
Oh, okay.
I, I, I understand that. Appreciate that. Mr. Banks, I mean, Mr. Griffin.
Alright, uh, there's a motion by Carl.
What is the motion?
To, uh, hire Botchel Insurance and to drop, uh,
Bancorp South.
Bancorp South. And I second that motion.
And who do you represent?
Uh, F B B I Insurance. That's Fisher Brown Botchel. We're being, that's who we're, we're being recommended today.
And, uh, and, and just to give a little feedback on, on insurance rates. If we get through this year without an increase, I think it's a blessing. Uh, I foresee, just like everything, insurance rate, whether we have whoever gonna go up in, in, in next year because everything else going up. Uh, and one thing ain't gonna be, it not gonna cost it to go up. It gonna be several, several different things that more likely don't, don't cost it to go up.
I'm not opposed to this, but I, I, I really wish, Greg, as you researched this for two weeks for me, tell me what to do.
Absolutely. If that's what the board would like, we can go back and then we'll put together a, a, a presentation as, as to how this actually goes. Yes, yes, sir.
Okay.
Alright. We got a motion to second.
What's the motion? Sorry. Say, what's the motion?
Ri, Riley, you got it?
We're gonna hire him?
Yeah.
Basically what I have is retain the services of Fisher Brown Botchel as agent of record for Madison County and terminate the services of Bancorp South.
Okay.
All in favor? All opposed?
I abstain.
Motion carry.
Make sure you, you inform Bancorp South.
We will, yes, sir.
You know, to, to have that and go from there.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Uh, and I'll look at the agreement to figure out how, it may have to be something we do in writing thirty, sixty days. We'll, we'll act accordingly. Uh, item fifty-five is the approval of contract renewal for dental vision and life insurance with Guardian. That's who we currently have. We're just, just keeping the, the train rolling.
Is everything the same?
Yes, sir.
You got, uh, any attachments or anything or you just?
I have the renewal information here.
Well, anytime something like this, if you would, just put it on the attachment.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and then that way, but everything's the same though.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
For the administrator, I'm sorry.
Do what now?
For the renewals with the, um, with the broker, the admin fees, U M R, this approval, U M R and, um, Guardian contract.
Now, we on the dental vision now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Vision and life insurance and guardian.
If everything's the same, that's fine.
The, the admin rates, they did not change. The, the admin rates, they did not change.
Okay.
All right, the motion.
No, the rates did not change. The admin.
Second by Trey. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
You might as well stay up here.
For, for you go to fifty-six.
Yes, sir.
At least on fifty-six, this is approval, uh, the contract, renewal contract for UMR. If we don't prove this today, will next week be too, I mean, next meeting be too?
I don't believe our contract expires until the end of September, correct? At the very least, I, I think next meeting we should be fine, but I'll defer to Loretta here.
We have to have, um, we have to have the rates and everything in place in order to, um, proceed with open enrollment. And right now, open enrollment is scheduled for August the sixteenth and the seventeenth.
And I mean the what, fifteenth?
Six, yeah.
Okay, uh, for the future, when you got contract coming like this, especially on health, vision, uh, I would like to know something. I didn't know something, I didn't know about it till agenda came out Thursday to Friday, that these were gonna, uh, be on here. And I was gonna have some, I was gonna have some suggested changes with, uh, health insurance.
Oh, where the? We still can.
There, there's something, uh, and it might be on prescription. Uh, there's some things on, on, for diabetic, certain things that, that, uh, they don't cover, that I was looking to see, could we get it covered for certain patients? Is that under prescription?
We can make changes like that, Mr. Griffin. We can make those changes. The only thing that this contract is actually approving is the administrative rates.
Okay.
So if you want to, you still have time to do.
No, that is not on there.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Ain't no way for them to know that.
In order to do what you want to do, if you want to do, um, whatever changes is that you want to look at, we can do that, and we can also have it for the next board meeting. But the only thing that I was asking for approval was actually the administrative, the contract is for the administrative rates. Not, um, that's not including the plan option. You can make those, the board allowed to make those changes whenever they want to.
Do they go up or going up?
Administrative rates, no, they remain the same. These rates have been in place since, uh, they have not changed since two thousand and nineteen.
Right.
Just, just, next time just have something there, 'cause we don't have nothing listed there.
Okay.
Uh, whether the administrative rates or what, at least I don't.
I don't have anything.
No, they're not.
You got anything? Okay.
I make a motion for approval.
Motion by Gerald, second by Carl. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
But, but we still can make those changes that you were talking about.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So that was fifty-five, and I believe fifty-six as well. That leads us to fifty-seven. The authorization advertised setting the public hearing for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget and tax levy on September fifth. Uh, as y'all are with.
Motion by Sheila.
Second.
Second by Gerald. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
All right, the son of a comptroller.
Good morning. The first item I have is number fifty-eight, which is the budget amendments and the interfind cash transfers.
Motion.
Motion by Sheila. Second by Trey. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
The next item of fifty-nine and sixty is approval of the general claims docket and one payroll docket.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Motion by Gerald, second by Sheila. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
The last item is number sixty-one, which is approval of the fleet corps claim docket.
Motion.
Motion by Sheila, second by Trey. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
I'm sorry, what was that motion again? Who made it?
I'm sorry. Uh, Sheila made it.
That's right.
All right, that's it. Okay. Riley.
Pursuant to Mississippi Code annotated twenty-seven forty-three three, on February the seventh, twenty twenty-two, you authorize the constables at my request to serve notice upon the owners of the tax parcels nearing maturity. I'm requesting that you allow me to run this payment for their service through payroll, to allow for the friends' benefits be paid on their behalf. They, they're paid, only paid the forty-five dollars if the taxes are redeemed. And even though this money would come from the county, it would be refunded back to you when I refund the small amount that Mr. Dean had me say the other day, uh, back, it will increase that amount, uh, next year. So if, I, I know that I asked you to do this, uh, the sheriff said there was no problem with him taking care of it, but that it did take deputies out of, uh, the area they need to be in to have to serve these. So therefore, I chose to ask you to do this. And, uh, I apologize for this coming up like this, but this was an oversight on my part. But I do ask that you will pay them out of payroll, because I do not have, by statute, I cannot pay them the way they need to be paid. And we got in trouble with the IRS in the past, not paying them properly. So this is why I'm coming to the board to ask you for this.
Now, wait one, one second. What, deputies or constables we're gonna be paying?
The constables had collected this year.
Okay.
The deputies had been collecting in the past, and the sheriff said, always said, I always do my duty, said, we'll take care of whatever needs to be done. But it does pull deputies off of places they should be.
Do deputies get extra compensation for doing this?
No, sir. It's just the straight amount pay, so.
There's no way to extra compensate them for doing this type of work, the deputies?
No, sir. The deputy, that's just part of their duty. If they go collect it, it's just, they pull it off and they go, is it my correct, Sheriff? That's correct.
But we can, the constables.
We can, the constables have, and that was, the legislature passed this and just did not address the payment issue. And, uh, I, I jumped the gun and said, the legislature passed this, we would like to have the constable do this. I got with, uh, Brad Harbor here, and he was willing to, to, uh, take charge of this. And, uh, if you have any question for Brad, he's here as well, but I would, I cannot pay them like I need to. There's still gonna be the same amount. You're still gonna get refunded the money that I would have paid the, the sheriff's department anyway, is gonna be refunded to you, the same amount.
Got a motion by Trey?
Second.
Second by Gerald. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Riley. All right, got our sheriff next.
Just a couple of quick items. I got the inmate meal log for, uh, July that I'll leave with you, clerk, if we could just acknowledge that for the minutes, please.
Make a motion to acknowledge.
Second.
Motion by Gerald, second by Trey. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Uh, also having in my hand the, uh, grant, uh, fulfillment paperwork. We were awarded, uh, our fiscal year, uh, Mississippi Office of Highway Safety Grant in the amount of sixty-three thousand and sixty dollars. Just made the board president's signature to execute that. Uh, I'd like to get you guys to entertain a motion to approve that and have the board president sign.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Sheila, second by Trey. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Third item I have is, gonna take me just a moment to explain, but it's, uh, uh, two different resolutions that, uh, arise from House Bill fourteen twenty-seven and House Bill fifteen forty-two, which were in the current year's session. Uh, I've discussed them with Mike, and it's, uh, uh, an award of a premium pay program, uh, through the legislature for first responders, being law enforcement and, and firemen, uh, where they, uh, issue a thousand dollar payment to every police officer in the state, basically, every fireman in the state, uh, through the legislature. So, uh, it, it's a step process. There's a, a resolution that has to be passed by the board of supervisors of each county. Uh, then there's, uh, some training that has to be conducted by my department for each individual officer. They have to sign an affidavit, return that to the, to, uh, DPS for their approval. The monies are then dispersed, uh, to the county to be given to the individual officers. Uh, there's also a second one, second resolution for the sheriff, being that I'm paid by the legislature. Uh, it's a separate resolution in that that money would be given to DPS and paid directly to me if y'all choose to participate in this program. Uh, I would ask that y'all would consider that, and I have the two resolutions here. I think Mike has reviewed those and finds that they, uh, they are fitting. Uh, and, and I also have an affidavit that I would have to get the, uh, administrator to sign, basically stating that, uh, monies were provided in accordance with the, uh, house bills. So I've got these two resolutions here, uh, basically saying that the board of supervisors wishes to participate and will follow all the applicable rules and, and, uh, governing of that, uh, those house bills and wishes to participate so that the officers and firemen can receive the payment through the state.
So basically this payment come from the state?
From the state, costs the county no money.
Yeah, both of them.
Both of them.
Yeah.
Motion by Trey.
I'll second, and we're talking about.
Here with discussion.
And we're talking about both resolutions.
Both, both resolutions. One for, one for the officers and then one.
Right.
Is for me.
Is that your motion? Yeah, we're basically, basically, we're just like pass through?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. You're, the county's requirement is to pass a resolution, uh, opting to participate, uh, individually to have.
Right.
Or receive the money. You're gonna receive the money, and then y'all will dispense it through your payroll department to the officers. Uh, except the second resolution allows the state to pay me directly, since I'm paid by the state.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Randy, can deputies still work private security in their car, in their, is there some type of new law against? You, you guys not working neighborhood security and stuff like that, or?
No, we still do.
Still, okay.
Uh, actually, it was expanded to allow us to use, uh, vehicles this year.
Right.
Uh, as long as there's a certificate of insurance and then identified the county of any liability whatsoever.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sheriff, also, um, I just want to follow up on the resolution we just passed for law enforcement. You mentioned that, uh, uh, fire department is under that same statute?
Yes, sir.
Is it, is it, uh, volunteer fire, is it, or is it?
As long as they are state certified. I don't know what that, uh, that, what that certification requires of, of, uh, firemen. I'm just not up, I'm not up to speed on what their certifications are. Uh, but I'm sure, uh, I'm sure Brad will be up to ask y'all to participate in this. I'm gonna show him this paperwork and, uh, get it worked out for the constables as well.
Well, and that's, that's really where I was headed. This, if anyone else qualifies, Greg, it may be worthwhile to look and bring it at the next board meeting and.
All, all certified or state certified first responders, firemen, law enforcement are, are eligible.
Greg, would you look into it and bring it back at the next board meeting or, you know, go from there? Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
All right, Sheriff. Appreciate it. Old business. The old business. Now.
I, I don't have any old business. Mr. Espe has some old business that.
I've got some recent old business.
Some recent old business that I'm not sure we voted on.
Thank you.
All right, uh, open enrollment is coming up, and the handbook has to be correct and reprinted. So during our discussion, we talked about random drug testing, but we did make a decision on the med, medical cannabis.
Yeah.
Issue. So what do you want to do? It's recent old business. So to refresh.
Yeah, refresh.
If someone has a medical cannabis prescription and they test positive, as Loretta said, you may not know it because the medical advisor at MEA will tell you it's negative. But you do need a policy in place. And what we're recommending is that if someone tests positive for medical marijuana, cannabis, that you will exclude them from the policy of discharging, disciplining, or refuse to hire because they have a medical prescription. So that's the policy. The process is that you may not know it anyway, because you'll get a negative result. But the, the policy has to be set. You either keep it like it is, or you will cha- change the policy for those who have vowed to be positive for medical marijuana. So you're not, you're telling them, we won't refuse to hire you. We will not necessarily discipline you, or we will treat you like we treat other people who have a legal prescription. That's a policy. It's gotta be printed in your handbook, and that's why I'm asking you.
Should it be, they should be treated as people that test positive for, um, painkillers that are already legal?
Repeat the question. This is the medical, Med, Mississippi Medical Cannabis Act.
Have, we're still talking about heavy machinery and trucks, right? And people that test positive for, is this random testing or after accident?
You already not doing, you excluded random already.
This is pre-employment and after accident.
You did that earlier in, in the meeting. So this.
In a random, not random, uh, reason of suspicion.
If, if somebody applied for a job with this county, we drug test everybody. All the job applicants are tested. If someone tests positive for medical marijuana, you have a decision to make. You will either refuse to hire them because they tested positive, or you are saying, as your committee recommended, that you're saying, we will, we will not subject you to a refusal to hire because you tested positive for a prescribed legal substance. That is the issue. You know the issue. But it's, it's a policy issue now. It's gotta be in the handbook.
My motion is going to be to, uh, uh, we treat marijuana as it is, a legal drug, uh, uh, along with other, like, all the other medications. And because if we put anything different, the first, and, and, uh, this person that don't get hired or, or do get hired, and he gonna go and get his lawyer and get the results of where he took that test at, and that result gonna show negative.
The state law allows you to treat them like we're treating them now. So Mississippi state law says you can refuse to hire, you can discipline, so forth. That's what the law says. So, I mean, I just want to be transparent. You're not breaking the law. So if they went and sued us, you could say we acted and of course with Mississippi statute, and we're immune. But what your committee is recommending is that it's a legal substance, and you treat them like you treat everyone else who tested positive, and you do not decline to hire them or discipline them if it's, if it's a legal substance. But it's not a lawsuit issue, not this one.
All right.
Yes.
Motion go along with the recommendation of lawyer and the committee. Is there a second? Second by Sheila. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All, all opposed?
No.
You there, Carl?
Call him up.
Hey. You voted out, right?
Yeah, voted out.
What did you, what, what was the motion, Carl?
Motion passed. We will write along. That's all right. We got you. Down with the eye. All right, uh, in other old business. In executive section business. Oh, man, we gonna get away with that.
You start quickly.
No executive session for me.
We are?
No, no. New business. In a new business. All right, well, we entertain a.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn to what?
Fifteenth to nine AM.
Fifteenth of August to nine AM.
Was that a second?
Make sure, get it ready for our children going back to school.
Who seconded that motion? Sheila?
Uh, Trey seconded. Cause Gerald.